Please not love this. Mr. Foster.
All right, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Very good. We'll now call the city council meeting to order for April eighth. Please rise to invocation and pledge allegiance.
Right with me? Father, we thank you for this day. Lord, we just ask that your presence will be in this meeting tonight, Father. Lord, we ask that your will be done, Lord. We ask that you be with each and every one of us, Father. Ask you to bless each and every one of us in this town, Lord, in this room, Father, in this state, in this country, Lord, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Madam clerk, feel please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember McGuire here. Councilmember Taylor. Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
First up, the item number four is to be a proclamation for Water Conservation Month. Jerry would love to read this proclamation.
Yeah. Whereas water is a basic and essential need of every living creature and whereas the state of Florida Water Management Districts and Mayor Garrett Anderson are working together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation and whereas City of Avon Park and State of Florida have designated April typically a dry month where when water demands are most acute, Florida's Water Conservation Month to educate citizens about how they can help save Florida's precious water resources and whereas Mayor Garrett Anderson has always encouraged and supported water conservation through various educational programs and special events and whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can make a difference when it comes to conserving water and whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can help by saving water and promote thus promote a healthy economy and community and now therefore be it resolved by that by the virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Avon Park, commissioners or councilmen, et cetera, do hereby proclaim the the month of April as Water Conservation Month. The City of Avon Park, Florida is calling upon each citizen and business to help protect our precious resource by practicing water-saving measures and becoming more aware of the need to save water.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bureau.
Pleasure.
All right, next be the consent agenda. We're looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, please.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? We have a motion in a second. Any questions? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor. Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number six is going to be a deferred payment plan agreement for Robbie L. Smith. Melody, I see your name there.
Yes, this is a deferred payment plan for Robbie L. Smith and the all clean laundry. His total amount due was a hundred and five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. He paid his required deposit of forty-two thousand, one hundred dollars and he is financing sixty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. So monthly payments will be five fifty-five nineteen.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this deferred payment plan?
I think it's great we have.
There's no questions. Be looking for a motion.
Motion to approve item D six, the deferred payment plan for Robbie's L. Smith.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion in a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor. Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'm number seven. Be the Avon Park Senior Activity Center Inc. It's to be a lease. Mark.
Yeah, this from the last meeting that references Sean moving over there. Jerry decided to just do it as a whole new lease and as you see it, it just exempts the ten by fourteen office over there.
Okay.
And Chris has already read it and then last week he's already signed it.
The annual with the automatic renewal seems.
Yeah, but just saves having to draft a whole other agreement. It took me about half an hour to finish the whole thing. So
Got it.
It was a couple hours, several hours.
Any questions on this lease?
None.
Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve item number D seven, Senior Activity Center's lease. At Avon Park.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor. Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number eight is to be a five-month revenue and expenditure report. Ms. Schaefer.
Yes, so Mark asked me to start doing these quarterly for you all. This report is a little misleading. You see a bunch of negative numbers. I'll change the format for next time, but this is a balance as of the end of February, which we are forty-one point six percent through the fiscal year. So if you really look at the last two columns, you've got your budget revenue received and your budget expenses used. If you look at those percentages, we're right where we should be in all of the funds. Some of them are a little over budget. Those would basically be your CRA funds because we received all of our revenues in the first few months and really haven't spent anything out of those. So overall, total funds, all funds were at forty-three point six in revenues received and twenty-eight point five two in expenses used.
Okay.
And I have a detailed report if anybody wants one of those to look at and give you all the detail behind it.
Excellent. Do we have any questions for Melody?
Oh, sounds like good news.
Seeing none. Obviously, this is an informational item. So Melody, we thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, we got attorney updates.
Okay, Form six. I know you all are excited. Okay, so you have the presentation really in your package and to talk about a little bit. We go to the slide that says, I would skip over the one that says about the Commission on Ethics and go to the one that says about the commission's website. It gives you an explanation of the fact that everything now is going to the website. Forms are going to be done there. Their information's there and so on. Next slide is we got there through Senate Bill seven seventy-four e-filing last year. Of course, it was passed in two thousand twenty-two, but twenty-three, excuse me, twenty-three and then twenty twenty-four here. It's actually they tried to, some people tried to get it extended to next year, as you know, and it didn't pass. It got washed. So you're stuck with this this year. In fact, as of January, they opened up the their website for filings. So if you go to e-filing for the CE Form six, they have the, as I mentioned, helpful tools on the filers under their website. Actually, if you look at the buttons and the next page there, when you hit the Form six button, you can, instead of that, you can hit the green button, which will give you a video on that. I sent that video to the clerk just this afternoon and she has that. She can send out to you if you want. It's just a link to that YouTube video that the Commission on Ethics did. The one that I'm doing here was put together by the Florida League of Cities and that was done back in August, presumptively, you know, because you were going to have to file starting January. And then turns out that was the case anyway. You'll need a password. When you click on it the first time, what happens is they'll they'll send you to a location where you fill out information that which they'll they'll send you a password. Then you can actually start in earnest of getting this done. There are some, there's a lot of information in here. Buttons that you can click with regard to information on different areas on their website. See. I don't know which one this is. If you look at two thousand twenty-one, a six full and public disclosure. You have to first add together all your household goods and personal effects. And if you're the value of your all your household goods and personal effects is more than a thousand dollars, then you know, you have to report those. And so and you look at the next slide, there's some buttons there to explain how you can come up with the value, how to value jointly owned assets, which I think you asked, somebody asked last last meeting. And then some of the information about it. And they also are going to obviously be very active in their question and answering on the on the telephone and probably online as well. But that the video that I sent to the clerk to send out to you all is like an hour long. So I'm sure you didn't want to watch that tonight.
Yeah.
But it it I started watching it and it's got a lot of information in it. So it may tell you everything you need to know. Or, you know, I'll get you a good start anyway. So comparing Form one to Form six, you look at this is old information that actually the fines have gone up since this was done. But you know, the there is a lot of help over there. They're expecting a lot of people to in their CPAs to or their attorneys to to ask questions. Where before on Form one, you did a review of your finances over the course of the year. Now the snapshot of your finances on twelve thirty-one or a more recent day of your choosing. So you can choose a more recent date, but it can't be any any earlier than twelve thirty-one.
I said again, it can't be earlier than twelve thirty-one?
Right, of last year. So, you know, but it could be if you fill it out in March or April or May.
This year.
This year, then you can do it on that date as of that date. But just a little advice, it's best to do it on a something you do every year like twelve thirty-one. Because as I'll tell you later on, they they will now, they have a way of importing Excel sheets. So if you, I'd, you know, it's probably a good idea to fill out your your Excel sheets with regard to some of these things like assets and liabilities and things like that. So you can just change them next year without renew reinventing the whole thing.
Okay, I ask you a couple of quick questions. You might want to go. So we're still going to do Form one by July.
Or six.
But we're not doing Form one this year at all?
No, Form six. That's it.
So we can do Form six anytime between now and twelve thirty-one?
Yes.
And it has to e-file?
Yes.
Who who does that? How do you do that?
You do that.
How do you do that?
If you look back, a couple of slides there showed three buttons. Let's see, four.
You do it on your own computer?
Here, see that right there?
Yeah. I saw that, yeah.
Yeah, so you what you do is when you punch on that that one, it'll it'll first of all evaluate whether you have to form file out Form six. Thank you.
But also do by July first.
It's still by July first, yeah.
What was due by July?
This Form six.
Has we done before July first this year?
Yes.
I thought it was the end of the
It's not the January thing anymore that they said?
No. No, that was that was the bill that failed.
So we got like less than three months to file the Form six.
Yep.
And you're doing it for last year's information.
Okay, because I know that my CPA doesn't e-file with IRS. So
Yeah.
I don't know how it could be much help to me.
Well, some of these things that for income, income, you can attach if you wish, your tax return and do it that way because it allows that option. But you have to file all your attachments and everything to it as well. But so it says Form one on here. This is an old thing because they used part of a informational thing for Form one, but it's Form six is what they're referring to. All right, let me go back to where I was here.
Sorry for your
Oh, yeah, no problem. Not a problem. Ask any questions you want. If I can answer them, I will. Okay, so the second one about comparing Form one to in Form six, liabilities before were over ten thousand. Now it's liabilities over a thousand. Before it was owned at any point in the year. This now it's owned at the date chosen. So it's either twelve thirty-one or the day if you choose a later date, then that's fine, too.
It's got between twelve thirty-one last year and July first this year.
Yeah. But like I said, most people choose twelve thirty-one simply because it gives them a date that they can do every year and that way you don't have to figure out next year, if you do twelve thirty-one, how much of this is twelve was in January, February, March, and how much is, you know, if you use the same date, all you have to do is remove that stuff within that period.
When you get done, you get to go out and celebrate Happy New Year.
Yeah, right.
Not not before.
As I said before, it's it's not inappropriate if, you know, city does get accounting help for this. Maybe for the first time, it's a good idea, you know, if you all wanted to decide to do that.
I'd say yes.
You probably do it by RFP if we had time. So you have to list all your liabilities over a thousand exclusions and are in the instructions and the most common ones according to this are mortgages, car payments, and student loans. But it's any form of liability you might have, you know, even if it's a loan to your relative or something like that or from your relative.
Okay, so if it's a car, you have to put down the make, model, year of the car. If it's a bank account, you have to put down the bank account numbers?
Probably. I couldn't get into Form one and fill it out.
Or Form six.
Or Form six, or Form six, right?
Okay.
You you have to report any income over a thousand dollars. Before you did in Form one, you didn't have to disclose your public salary. Now you do. And obviously, as you mentioned, force you have to mention the source name and address and amount. So the primary sources of income are things like, you know, your gross income on federal tax returns, salary, capital gains, the same type of stuff. Must and as mentioned, has to include your salary, but you may instead attach federal income tax and other all schedules and attachments. So if you do the income tax, just bear in mind, everybody will know what your income tax forms look like. Some people don't like that. But with this is pretty pretty all encompassing as well, so.
Okay, how you dollar round up down or do you have to give exactly a penny or?
No, I wouldn't think you don't, but but that would be in the instructions, I'm sure.
Oh, I mean, if you had a something worth twelve hundred fifty-two dollars, can you just put down twelve hundred?
No.
You could put twelve, twelve fifty?
Yeah, but if you it was twelve fifty-two and fifty cents, probably you could round it up and round it down. Yeah. But I I'd say check their instructions because like I said.
In other words, you're not going to take any blame for this, now, right?
Well, it's because they wouldn't let they wouldn't let me into Form six. I got a copy of it, but you know, I couldn't get into the instructions and all that stuff.
All right.
And it's totally different when you fill it out as opposed to just looking at it and have to go through it. But
I'd take the rest of the year to do it.
Well, that's why I suggested, you know, maybe get some help for that disclosure of secondary sources of income. You have to disclose clients or customers if you own greater than fifty-five percent of the business and the income from the business is greater than one thousand. Client and the particular client and customer or customer you have to report has contributed greater than ten percent of the business's gross income. So those are the three parts of that. You own five percent of the business, which, you know, you don't have to report AT&T because if you own that much of AT&T or Microsoft, then you shouldn't be here. Income from the business then has to be greater than a thousand, which most businesses are carrying on your do. But then that you have to report those clients or customers that contributed greater than ten percent. So if you're your business made ten thousand, a hundred thousand dollars that year, then you have to report anybody that ten thousand or more that you that paid you ten thousand or more. So if you're a plumber, you know, it's a big job. If you're an attorney, it's based on the client payments and things like that. So then you have to report the business name, client name, address, client business description of those that you reported based on this, that's that criteria that I mentioned. And this is disclosure of interest of specified businesses, really not any difference from Form one to Form six. They want to know if you're, you know, an owner of a regulated business and things like that. And most people don't have, you know, have the answer is no on most of those, but check that out. It's the same as what was in Form one. You must disclose ownership of greater than five percent, no specified businesses, and there are businesses of a type specified instructions. Like I said, utilities are a big one. Still have to do your four hours of training and report that. It's just a check the box. Of course, you should have get a certificate from whoever gives it to you. So you have something to prove that you did it in the future. And that's pretty much it on that. Any other questions about that? I, like I said, I went in, they would only let me file Form one or go into the box for Form one, not for Form six. And would be a lot easier because that's the forms are not easy to work with. But so the second part of this is legislative bill summaries, which as I mentioned, the mayor, I I'm going to beg off on that until next month because I'm attending a the annual Florida Bar Conference for city attorneys, city, county, local government. And so if I did the presentation, which I could do, all I'd be doing is just reading what they put together. Here, I'll be able to, you know, get the information from them at the conference and they'll be able to give me information like this particular bill failed, but expect it to be back next year. So, you know, plan on that sort of thing and any nuances associated with new new laws. So I think I do be able to give you a lot more information on those bills after I get that presentation from the Florida Board of, or it's the Florida League of Cities lobbyists that actually give it. There's they have two lobbyists and they come in and do it to the Florida Bar Conference for City County Local Government Seminar. And I that only tend that till the end of this month and then next month I'll be able to give you something on it.
Okay. Any questions?
I have one more question. Can you start something and then stop and then go back and start it off before you left off?
I would be willing to bet, yes. Because my recollection was there was a save function on that. And I mean, I just went into Form one just briefly, just to see what it looked like. And there's a there's a save function. But, you know, you'll see, I'm sure that it would be like ridiculous if you got called out to do something, you know, then then you'd lose the whole thing. That would not make any sense.
Especially because they want so much information.
Yeah.
Have done this a thousand times, you wouldn't have all your information. It's like you're taking all the stuff to your CPA. You gotta have all this stuff and who's going to say, well, I won't have all that stuff ready. I don't know exactly what I need, so.
Right. Well, even if you get it, get it a an accountant, they're still not going to be able to go to your house and count all your assets. So you guys are going to need to put that together.
Yes, yeah, that's
Well, the only thing they can do, the only thing they can do is really say, okay, well, here's what you need to fill in here and that sort of thing.
If I have one of those.
But I would highly recommend you get to Excel if you don't have it already, you know, in your Microsoft package because it'll make your life a lot easier to do it in in future.
Yeah, I don't think I have.
Because that now they can now it's a it's a CSV file and they allow the downloading of CSV files. So that'll make your life a lot easier. That way, if you sell a car, you know, and you replace it, you can change the value and the car information on your your Excel.
Very good. Any questions? Seeing none. Jerry, thank you very much.
Pleasure.
Moving on to item number eleven, the council discussion. This would be claw trucks. Mr. Bernard.
Well, thank you. Well, first of all, ever since we went through some of these changes on the garbage pickups, I know that city staff has gotten dozens and dozens of calls. And I I have to get calls and people hardly even remember about all those things that we changed. But the one thing that I think that we need to continue with is the claw truck. And the reason why I say that is because Avon Park is is full of trees all over the place. Some streets, there's tree in every yard and these aren't just, you know, five, six, eight, ten foot trees. Some of these are thirty, forty foot trees. And so we have a lot of storms, whether it's wind or rain or lightning storms that when you get some of these say, let's just say even a two inch limb when it comes down, you're going to have, you know, maybe twenty-five five foot limbs off of that. And so you're going to have possibly one or two huge limbs that would actually be equal to your two cubic yards of what we used to call a pickup on a clam truck. And to and then also if you happen to have oak trees, you got probably two cubic yards and the wind just from tree moss. But I I think that it's a lot to expect for especially for a lot of senior citizens who would possibly have to go out there maybe a whole weekend and take a bunch of trees that either came down through storm or even trees that they had that bend over their driveways or or over towards the house, but they're going to have to use either prune it down or chainsaw it down or whatever, and then try to expect us to you know, cut them all up in packages that you have to tie up with rope. I just don't think that that's something that we can expect a a large group of our citizens in Avon Park, our senior citizens. And so I I watched the clam truck and I must say the guy we have is an expert. I mean, the things that he does with that thing and picks it up and packs it and turns it and twists it and so on and so forth. I think that that's a service that is very, very, very much needed. And I know we try to do our best to try to save expenses in every corner and so on and so forth. But I think that, like I said, just drive down Main Street, look at the wall, look at all the huge trees there. Well, luckily we have city employees that will pick up those things after a storm and put it in a truck. And I'm not talking about hurricane storms. I'm just talking about a fifty degree windstorm or even a lightning storm. I I can tell you, I have trees that have been hit by lightning probably at least six times. And then I do have to deal with a a four to six inch limb and a chainsaw and cut it up. But if I had to cut those up and then tie them up, that would be like almost impossible. And so then what you're saying is then we all would have to go out and hire a service to come and and do our yard every time we have a storm, which is getting ready to start in the month of June. Those types of storms are going to be pretty common. So I'll just leave it open to everybody else's opinions and discussion, but by doing so, I'm going to make a motion that we continue the use of the clam truck in Avon Park.
Okay, so we would need a second in order to have a discussion since emotions. All right, so we got a motion in a second. I guess first question I would have is, you know, you talked only about the trees, but the clam trucks, they do pick up other things besides trees. So is it your intention to still pick up both because they go two different places? You know, the garbage has to go to the landfill. Trees go to our
Right.
Unfortunately, I didn't think of that point, but I will say I had a complaint from a citizen on a Sunday afternoon of all things, which I did not respond to. I don't think I'm have to work on a Sunday. So I did not respond to that person. But but you're right. I'm driving to work, driving to here tonight. There is somebody down the street that has some stuff that I'm not sure is questionable that we should pick it up or not, or whether we should charge or not. But I think if we did charge for something like that, I think that the easiest way for the city to do it be be used of the clam truck instead of trying to take five or six guys out there and try to throw it in the back of a pickup truck or whatever it is. So I think it would come in handy for that use also.
Well, I think obviously, you know, the more that you can pick up for free, the better. I mean, everybody's going to appreciate that, but ultimately it's going to come down to, you know, how much does it cost and how much is the, you know, council willing to devote towards it? So the obvious question comes from staff of we went this route for a reason. So what is the cost difference and all the things associated with it with maintaining that and going forward with that?
First, I'll cover the operation and I'll let our new director speak on it because we are using our claw trucks, but you know, we have But, you know, we have, because we have gotten complaints, not on not use, just people still understanding how it's been done in the county for over 20 years. But when I rode around one of the neighborhoods, a claw truck would have been useless because they just had one bag out there of some clippings in it or tied up things. So you don't need a clam truck picking those up, making divots in their yard, especially in this HOA who tend to complain a lot. But because we weren't picking it up. Also, and they had area like bulk things or just, there was a child seat out there. I saw an old vacuum cleaner. You don't want claw trucks picking that stuff up. I will say that because now I got a director here, I can go out and ride around a little more than I used to. I, one thing came out of this that I probably didn't think would, but more people are bringing their garbage carts in. Just because we put that in there, bring it in, there's less seen on the street. But we do use the claw trucks because we're still going around picking some big piles up and they're being charged. Also code enforcement is now out there. We had an illegal dump that they picked up the other day with a claw truck. So they're out there, but to use them like we used to, the, the city looked like a mess. And I get what Jim's saying, but you know, I, I look at the two, your property, you gotta take care of it. Yes, we got some big trees and there's times that maybe we need it, a claw truck. But I think the rear end loader, as far as picking the stuff up in the bags and the four foot and the 40 pounds is, is working. But I'll let Jason, because him and I, Jim told me, asked me to put this on. So he's, he's, he knows what we're using them for with the supervisor. So turn it over to you.
Okay, I just, I'll just make one comment before you start it. Don't die. I, it doesn't mean, I, I do agree with the fact that if you have a, a lot of trees and you do have more than two cubic yards or four or six or eight, I, I, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't charge extra for that. I'm not asking for that. I'm just talking about normal things. And at the same time, I also think another suggestion would be to save some money. If we do do this is to, instead of doing it, I think they used to do it every other week. I wouldn't care if they did it once a month because I've, I've had it where at times where they might've missed or they, or the truck was broken down. And guess what happens? All that foil each starts to die off and all of a sudden your pile is down about this long. So all of a sudden my four cubic yards is now cute, two cubic yards. So I, I, I just think we need to find some kind of a, in the middle scenario where we can make this work. And I'll leave it up to you, Jason.
Jason Atkinson, public works director. Yes, both of you are correct. I mean, we're, we're doing our best to try to maximize efficiency. That's what we're doing. So whatever we can get and take out to, you know, we can service more sites if they're smaller piles. Cause it takes a while for the truck to put that, the, the down riggers down and go out there and do his thing. So someone just gets off and throws it in the back. It's quicker, does less damage. You know, someone happens to put it on, you know, close to a cable box or something. It's, it's much less forgiving when someone's using their hands. But when it gets a little bit bigger and, you know, we're not, we're not there like that's 2.3 yards. I mean, I mean, it's close, we're good. If it's, if it's not, then we're reaching out, we're trying to make contact and say, hey, this is, this is this much. It's, it's over the limit and $10 per cubic, that's about five cubic yards. You know, you had two free, it's going to be an extra $30. Okay, good to go. And then that just gets usually put on their water bill. It's accounted for, so he's accounted for in our, our billing software. So we see it there. The whole thing was is for everyone to get out, make contact and understand that people are new to the, you know, the rules, understanding what's what. But I think as we go along and they start seeing what's happening, everyone will understand what's going on and we go from there. But as far as the, the, the grapple truck, when, when, when it's advantageous to use it, we use it. When it's not, then we, we try to use other means.
Okay. So it's going to be part of your ongoing process to still have a grapple truck at all times?
Yes, sir. And there's other things we could take a look at. There's other aspects in the future, maybe even like grapple trucks now have a little bin on the side and it looks like a cut out 55 gallon drum. Where you just put it on the side and it just goes right in. So like you don't even need to put outriggers out. There's, there's different things coming out to make the operation and, you know, it's fluid. So we're, we'll move along and hopefully, you know, all these things that work out best for us, we can get it. Cause whatever goes out to our, our landscaping debris area is, is free. I mean, it's not free for personnel and having to handle the material, but we're not paying a fee. Whereas roughly, it almost doesn't matter what goes out to this, the dump site. I pulled an Excel file. I, I took a look at all our charges. Almost everything's $45. So if you have garbage mixed in with tree debris, you're paying $45. So the goal is, is for us, and we're actually doing a pretty good job to maximize our, our operation. Is that it's, you know, it's, it's separate. What is trash needs to go, you know, it's doing the green thing. So that's where we're at. But we are implementing.
$45 per ton.
Yes, sir.
So a big pile could be several tons.
Yeah.
And if you have a little bit of trash mixing with it, now the entire load is.
Mangled. Yes, exactly. So then what we can do to pull some of that out and then just take the landscaping debris and we try to do it from there.
I think that was a great answer. I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. I actually just had a little bit of work done at my house. And I had probably enough to maybe fill up a pickup truck full of heavy household flooring, wall materials, wood, stuff like that and aluminum. And luckily I have a good lawn guy that took it away for me. And I'll just say publicly, he charged me $60, which I thought was more than fair enough for not only for him to load it up, but also to take it out and wherever he got charged, which I don't know, obviously he must've made some money. Either that, or he just did me a little bit of a favor so he can keep cutting my yard once a month or something. So I think all the answers you gave us were perfect. And so if we need to vote this thing down because we don't really, we hope we're still taking care of it, then that's fine with me too.
Just a suggestion that obviously Jason hasn't, you know, presented on this topic before. Maybe it would be best to give him some time to go over what you think the future operations will be. And maybe some of the concerns that have arisen since we've gone to this new plan. And maybe give another presentation as to what we'll be doing going forward. If there's any tweaks that would be, that need to be done that you identify right out of the gate. And if we have any more concerns at that point, maybe bring it up again later.
Okay. No, I'm, I thought it was great. It's a simple solution. Instead of under time, we're just going to selectively use it.
Would you like me to provide some recommendations in there? If I see a something that a group manager and I agree upon it, recommendations that you may want to tweak something?
Yeah, I mean, personally, I would, I just think that, you know, the change that we made obviously is, it was a pretty drastic one. Everybody knew it was coming. Everybody knew it was necessary, but it was pretty drastic. And so anytime you make a drastic change, you're going to have unforeseen things that pop up. So maybe after we've done this for a few months, we revisit it and see what's working, what's not working. See if there's any tweaks that we can make. And obviously any suggestions that you have would be more than welcome.
Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Just keep massaging it until it, until it's.
Got you. Thank you.
Mayor, can I add something please? Your vote. And yeah, him, we've already talked about that. We know something's going to be tweaked, but we got to see what works first. We appreciate that. But can you tell them about the little warning things you've created to put out just so they know?
I'll kind of show you two things and I'll, I'll make sure you get it.
I need one. If I need one.
Chris, you have one thing here. So what you're looking at, let's go over the, let's go over the tag. So we, when this was going into effect and also on there for different things, it says, you know, if you're not in compliance or, you know, something doesn't work, the, the city will tag your dumpster. It's also the same, I think with the water, it's like it can be tagged and whatnot. Like if you're blocking the meter or something along those lines. So I went ahead and unfamiliar with this, being, being from the Miami area, we had, you know, at the bottom of the tag is like a serrated, like you can just rip it off. And then it basically allows the, the employees that are out there that if something doesn't meet the requirement, whether it's trash or debris, all they have to do is just do a check and then just write the number and the issue number and the address. So I mean, the address doesn't need to be, if it's like to say 232 Lotella Drive, 232 Lotella, we, we know what's what, right? And then they go ahead, they put it there. I would say probably the first one, you know, you could put it on the cart. You know, the second one, they probably put it on the door in case it blew off for some reason. And then after that, but still take it like my, I mean, the goal, if it's not, if it's not egregious, let them know because they don't know, right? And you're going to be back to have to pick it up regardless. So the, the goal is to, to let the customer know we strive for customer service. That's our goal. So you let them know this is a deal. And then if you have a non-collection, then you would check the box that says notice a non-collection. And then we would forward that to code. Part of this, everything that we have on the shared drive, I created a, you know, an Excel file. And it basically has the whatever warnings that we gave. So the, the solid waste supervisor would plug this information in and then say what type of warning, what was it for? You know, it's small, it's basic. And then anytime you wanted to go check, you can just control F and see how many times they were warned and whatnot. And it would pop up there and say, hey, it's time to issue a violation. That way if someone say, you haven't warned me, well, I have the, the little ticket that says you were warned on this day, this day. And now, you know, here we are. So that way gets everybody involved, the code, code enforcement, because I know they had their concerns when it first came out. And we didn't want to, you know, drown them with, with the amount of work that would have been ahead. So we said, let's, let's tackle this as a team effort and I came up with this. I should be taking delivery on these tags hopefully tomorrow. But one side is English and the other side, flip side is Spanish. So whichever, you know, could check it and it's the same numbers. It matches up perfect. So it works out and that's the way we did it. We also on the, the website, I adjusted our, our mapping. And I, I added some of the other communities like Lake Bird, Hollyhurst, Crystal Lake. So some of those areas I added them in there and basically told them what days there was, including Gaster, Gaster Road and wrote that in that way someone, because I was even a little confused coming into it, looking and wondering what day. I was like, oh, it's right above the yellow. That's today. No, that's actually, that was on Monday, not, you know. So kind of threw me off a little bit. So I was like, if I, if, if I don't know it, I can't expect the customer to know it. That's kind of what I go by. But, um, so we got that fixed up and, and that's that. I mean, there's, we also created a calendar because if you, if you looked at our flyer, the flyer didn't tell you when it was getting picked up. It just told you every other week, right? So there it is. Okay, Chris, good job. So there's the calendar. And then if you kind of, if you scroll down a little bit, it gives you some of the additional information there. So you just match up the, the month with the day, you know, you match up the calendar and it'll tell you whether you're on a, you know, a pickup week or an off week where the off week you kind of do some of the other maybe paid jobs and whatnot. And it's up to the supervisor to handle that. I try not to get too, you know, tell him how to run his operation. But that's where, that's where we're at. And I figured that would help out everyone. We're kind of looking at ways to figure out how to get this out, you know, and other means to people. Whether, you know, whether it's thinking about a magnet or how can we get them the magnet? Or do we do something, I mean, even event in the park or something like a little outreach? So who knows? What? Maybe one of the events we, I, I go sit out there and hand out calendars and magnets. Who knows?
The calendar.
Whatever, whatever it takes. So that's what we're doing.
Okay. Any questions on any of that?
I have a question on the yard grease. It say that it can be bagged or placed in a garbage container. So the guys are actually getting off the truck to dump this garbage container?
Uh, they have a tipper. Sorry. They have a tipper on the back of the truck. It's like mechanized. And it just, it's the same thing as the garbage can. It just flips it up and it kind of just shakes it and it puts it back down.
They're referring to your normal garbage can that you use. The typical garbage can that you use every day. That's what they're talking about.
They said they have, yeah, they have those and they, well, they have some, you know, some of the roll off carts that they can use. They can, they can, they have like a lip or if it's 40 pounds and it's just like a smaller garbage can, like just one, just a normal garbage can you may buy, like a little gray one, then they could just pick it up. Cause it's like 40 pounds, not massive. It's massive. There's other ways two guys could dump it, but, but either one.
But mostly the machine is going to dump.
Usually if it's, if it's, if it's just 40 pounds, staff can pick up. The guys are pretty, pretty fit.
Calendar accurate or just a sample?
No, it's accurate.
Any other questions?
No, but I think that's great. And I, and I will say one thing, you know, it's just, if you, just like if you have a bigger house, it's going to cost you more to paint it. If you have more trees, you're liable to have more yard waste. So if that means you have more yard waste, you have to pay the city extra, pick it up. I think that just should be something expected because it's just, everybody pays similar type of tax. And so I, I, I think just whatever's fair, as long as it get it picked up is best for the city. So I'm good for everything you said.
I, I have to say something to that. I don't necessarily agree with what Jim just said. We got a lot of senior citizens that live here in this community. And I don't think we know how many of them have trees or don't have trees. So they're on a budget. First of all, they're on a budget. Senior citizen, most of them is on a budget, especially the ones that's not receiving a retirement and they just getting a social security check. They're on a budget. They may have to pay someone to come and pick them up out their yard or cut them off their, off their house. And now we're going to charge them to come and pick them up because it's more than their next door neighbor. They're senior citizen. They, they're on a budget and what? We don't take that in consideration?
Uh, you, we can take anything into consideration by the circumstances. There are circumstances where we pick up the garbage cans for people that aren't able to do so. So if, if we're asked for certain things, there's things we can do. However, if, if someone hires, you know, a tree service, like that's considered contractor generated debris, which is against our code. And I can't break our code. I can try to, you know, but I can't break it. So if that's the case, and it's on that contractor to haul it away.
You ever thought about it? She probably can't pay him to, to, to cut it down and haul it away, but she can pay him to cut it down.
I understand.
There's extra money for him to haul that away because wherever he's hauling it to, he got to pay for it. And in turn, he wants her to pay him.
I understand that councilwoman, that it's, it is a code though. And if you guys want to change, you know, but that's, that's the, that's the way the code reads.
We have to follow our own code. We're required to follow it just like anybody else.
I understand we have to follow the code, but I thought it was a discussion on the different debris. And we was talking about, you know, opposed to the, the price that we're having to pay at the landfill, opposed to when we wasn't having to pay as much. Like, like Jim said, the storms are coming and you're going to have, you're going to have branches that blow into someone else's yard, but that person ain't have a tree. But they're going to have to cut it. They're going to have to cut it up or whatever.
I think this, as a, as a council and I work with the manager, there's extenuating circumstances. As a storm roll blows through, it causes a lot of damage. And maybe we waive and, you know, that's a possibility. And we take a look, but everyone's on the same page with us making that decision.
Yeah. Making individual decisions is more of a problem, you know, because then you have to, what do you do based on, based on what income they have? We don't know that. We have no way of really ascertain that or reliably. And then if you treat one person differently than another, then you create another issue. So I mean, you have to barely apply it, no matter, you know, who you do with it.
Is, is there a way? I don't know. Just wondering. I know there's other programs that we have for people of low, that have the low income. Maybe there's something that they feel out of form and they can get it. I don't know. Maybe that's something.
Well, it depends on the finances of the city. If you have money to. Well, it depends on the finances of the city. If you have money to, to pay for that, you know, the costs associated with that, uh, some. Some, uh, smaller cities, um, basically provide a, you know, a list of, uh, charities that can, will help out with things like that. So at least it gets done, you know, and it helps out. But, you know, um, whether the city itself wants to be the charity is, is up to the. The budget really. And if you prove it for the budget and. It's something they can consider, but I would say you have to be uniform in how you apply it. So otherwise you create a whole different problem.
Yeah, I, I believe in the good neighbor policy. And I think that, uh, those of us that are physically adept. And have senior citizens that are not at all, then I think good neighbors go out and help those people. And I, and, uh, and I, and I've seen it all the time, what's happened and, uh. Yeah, even if, I've even seen neighbors help me out, even though they'd offered to do it for free and I couldn't afford to pay them. I, I can give a perfect example of the last hurricane we had. My entire yard was, was full of trees, the entire yard. And to the point where three kids went down the street, came down and said, you want your yard cleaned? I said, yep. How much you charging? They said, nothing. And they spent all day piling up all the stuff and Mark would tell you. Cause you've been out of my house to where I had like four feet high of debris, which is quite pulled up by the county or state or whatever. All the way around my whole entire property. And, and these three kids. Didn't charge me. Unfortunately, that was a while ago and I think they've grown up and some of them may be gone. So. I, I might be looking for some new kids, but, uh, I, I, I understand we all have our issues, but we, uh, you know, we. We look for help and, and get, ask for help and get help while we can.
So pretty much I just tell them that you just put out two cubics at a time, right? Cut it up, leave it on the side of the house and just look at one of these calendars. And make sure you don't go over your two cubits and city will pick it up pretty much, right?
Yep.
Yes, if, if you have more than that, then you just get a quote to go out there and we'll, we'll pick it up.
All right. Any other questions?
No.
Seeing none, we, there was a motion in a second on the floor. Nope. There's no further questions. We'll call a roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember McQuire.
I don't even remember what the motion was at this point.
The, the motion was, uh.
To continue.
Continue using the grapple truck. However, the discussion was that the grapple trucks will be used just in circum, certain circumstances.
In other words, it never was retired. So this, I, am I.
So can he just reset? He can't resend the.
He can withdraw his motion.
Even after it's been seconded?
Oh.
Not after it's been seconded, right?
No.
Oh.
I would tell you, I'm going to vote no, because I don't think we need to do it.
Anything?
All right, no.
No, that's it. I mean, you're right. Once it's, once it's been seconded, it's, it's no longer the, uh, the purview that, that motion maker.
Okay, so Councilmember McQuire, no. Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
No.
Mayor Anderson?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you very much.
Last time I make a motion.
It was a good discussion.
Yeah, there you go.
Good discussion.
Any.
Came up with a good answer. Thank you, Jason.
Yep. City manager updates?
Well, the one on there you see, unfortunately no further updates from the FAA, which I think we all thought there'd be something by now. Um, just something I got today, the deputy mayor and then, um, the council agreed about looking to get extended warranty on our. New AC units out at the Boys and Girls Club. We've got one in from, uh, Michael Pollitt, who put, um, put it in, the ACs in. It's just for the, uh, three smaller units. It's four thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents for ten years. And he still needs to get us with the quote behind the two larger units.
Okay.
And the warranty is. The total cost he spent out there was seventy-two thousand.
You said these are extended warranty?
Yes.
Like ten.
How long are the, they, they just, we got, just got new, new units out there, right?
Right.
And how long did those last? How long were they good for?
I don't know what they are, but I'm assuming about three years. I think that's what mine was at my house. But to extend it to ten years would cover.
Parts and labor.
Yeah, the parts and labors, um, air handler, condenser, cooler, indoor coil, thermostat. But that, it's four thousand one hundred and seventy dollars for the three smaller units. And he'll get us.
What size are the smaller ones? If I might ask. You know the size?
I don't know. They're not on here. It just says the smaller units. Did you have the invoice?
I mean, they're like triple the size of a residential one, I assume.
I don't think they are. I think the smaller ones were like five or six tons.
My normal house is three tons.
Up to five usually.
Wait, Melody did highlight them, but she'll have to read them.
The one with the glasses.
The two large ones were fifteen ton and then there's a one, three ton, one, four ton and one, five ton.
Okay, and that's four thousand dollars for the three small ones.
Each or all of them?
All together.
All of them?
All, all of them? I, I think that's a good, that's.
Three, the four and the five tons, are those residential sizes?
Yes. It may be a commercial quality, but a residential size starts off at usually two and a half. Unless you buy one of those that you put on your wall and, uh, they start off at two and a half and then usually. Five is about how, how they go for residential.
Yeah, the, these three cover the classroom, the office and the locker room.
Yeah. I, I, I think, uh.
There was no option for the big commercial units?
No, he's going to get that back to us. He's. Okay, Andy today hasn't got it back to us.
So it'll come up on a future council meeting?
Yes.
Okay. That's the main thing. So we'll have an opportunity to see all the documents and, uh, make a better decision.
Well, thanks for doing that.
Absolutely. Anything else? City manager report?
You're good. You're good. They said they're good.
I don't know if they're good, but they're done. Now we have great staff. All right. Uh, if there's nothing else for the good of the city, we entertain a motion to.
When I did my presentation, I mentioned about the accountants, but I, I think you should. Consider it if you're going to do it because you're going to need, need to get an RFP or something like that for an accountant, if you can do it. So if you, do you want? To get an accountant to assist and then, uh, uh. Then now's the time to tell him so he can get that going before the next meeting and. Otherwise it might take another month to get one in to help you.
Would it be possible to simply allot a fee per councilperson?
Yes, absolutely. So if you have your own accountant, you know, they can allot a fee and that way they can deal with it. Or we can get a, you know, and we can also get a fee for people who don't have their own accountant, you know, from an accountant that'll do it.
Any suggestion as to what would be appropriate for that fee?
No, I have no, no idea. But, but you know, RFP or probably RFQ would, uh.
Can we do it in that quick of a turnaround?
Pretty soon, uh, and, uh, you know, I know though that it even exceed. Mark's spending authority, you know, in, in that regard, I wouldn't think.
I sure hope not.
Yeah, I wouldn't think it would. So it might be just something he can do, you know, callouts on if it's not much good. But you, I mean, I think you're going to need some help on this first, first round anyway.
Yeah. I think she bring a, a lot of. I don't know what was the council or the, uh, city council members or the commissioner, that I think they allotted up to five hundred dollars per member. Pay, pay for their account.
Yeah, I remember it was something. I don't remember what the figure was.
Yeah.
So you want me to just get quotes and bring it back to the next meeting?
Sounds good.
Good.
Any other suggestion? Besides that?
That's it.
No.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got the suggestions. I don't think the city should, um, be paying for the council's personal, um. Financial, they have someone come in and do their personal financial. I think if you want to run for the position. That comes along with the position.
Yeah.
Come out your pocket and you pay it yourself. I don't think the city residents should be paying for it.
Sounds like it'll come up at our next meeting. All right. Anything else to give the city?
No.
Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned.